Ms. Counselor Burdick, okay. I see him there. Thank you. Oh, nice decorations. Thank you very much.
No, my pleasure.
Okay, I guess we can start at any time now. Thank you, Cindy. And you'll bring Larry in?
Uh, the town will, yes. They're controlling today's, um, meeting. So that it's more secure.
There's Larry right there.
Thank you, Larry. And thank you for your comments.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Chris.
Yeah, I tried to phone you, just so you know, and, um, didn't pick up, so. Thank you for your suggestions.
Okay.
Um, so Cindy, I'll open the meeting and, um, and are you ready for me to re-
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. So this is a meeting of the Committee to Review Town Council Rules and the Town Code on January 6th, 2025 at 4:00 PM, uh, by remote participation. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Saying none, this meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video On-Demand Archives on the Town of Barnstable's website as printed. So, um, I'll be happy for Cindy to make the roll call.
Chair of Committee and Vice President of the Town Council, Chris Clark.
Here.
President Craig Tamish.
You're muted, um, Craig.
There you go. I'm here.
Thank you.
Counselor Seth Burdick.
Present.
Counselor Kristen Turkelson.
Here.
Counselor Betty Lucky.
Here.
And we're also joined by Attorney Karen Nobr and Assistant Town Attorney Allison Cogliano. And any votes taken today will all be, uh, roll call votes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, next public comment. And Larry, thank you very much for participating, and thank you for your suggestions.
Am I the Lone Ranger tonight?
At this time, you are.
All right. Chris, I was a little, um, uncertain as to quite how to present this. Because I've put in hours doing this. I'm not looking for praise or thanks or anything. Um, my concerns, first of all, threw me off on the in-person versus Zoom matter because I went back to, uh, what Felicia said on March 21, saying that, uh, about you could have hearings for, um, hybrid Zoomer in person. But there was never any mention by this committee that you were in fact going to do more than just the in-person hearing, so. Um, my feeling is that it should have, it should still be in person, but we're past that for today at least. Um, and, uh, the other thing that I was noting, um, and this is not to be critical in any way, but back when the, uh, matters were decided by the council in, uh, March of 2024, 21st of March, to be exact, uh, under 2024-166, um, it was decided with respect to the ad hoc committees, all of the committees, that the president would be sort of an ex officio, um, therefore not on any of the, any of the boards individually. Uh, but there was no limitation for the vice president, and Craig, of course, then was assigned to this TCR committee, and that's the only committee that he's on. Um, so my concern with respect to that is that now, I'm grateful that Craig and Chris are president and vice president respectfully, respectively. But, uh, now the president isn't supposed to be on this committee anymore. Um, and so what effect is that going to be? But I looked at it that if we were discussing votes and decisions on any of these matters, whether it's today or at some future time, um, how can you vote in favor of something and then be asked before the entire council to vote for yourself, or how have your votes ratified? I don't know how that works, but I, I'm under the impression that the, um, that Craig's role is, um, sort of expired. The other thing that I'm very well aware of is that the, uh, we call it the Committee on Committees. Uh, the long word of it is effectiveness of standing committees. But, uh, that one, the only replacement, other than the four of you, is going to be that John Crowe would be filling in into the position that Craig has held. Uh, so if that was the case, John is, is going to be, uh, asked to get caught up to the rest of you, uh, even if he read all the minutes and listened to all the videos. So, um, my thought is, is that it's an option whether or not this hearing should be postponed and can, and allow John to come in under your umbrella and proceed in that regard, uh, or not. Um, so, um, the, the, I won't get into the fact, because I don't want it to come across as being critical, but, um, until today, the only minutes that I've ever received ended with the September 24th minutes and the September 24th videos. So it was difficult for me to look back on the hearings on the 29th of October, the 18th of November, and the 16th of December to determine what happened. Um, that being the case, um, however, what I have done, and I have done this in detail, is to take the comments that I submitted in volume, and I admit that it's in volume, um, but I'm also aware of the fact that several of you may view these as confusing. Um, all I, all I can say is that the confusion has existed from my point of view from day one, uh, primarily because we've jumped around with a lot of different, um, matters. It got to the point that I felt, what? What's the matter?
Nothing. Continue.
I heard a squeaking sound. Um, so I have taken it upon myself to try to break into two groups. One is priorities, meaning things that I consider are more significant and more serious in terms of the conduct of the council. And the other is the, uh, are things that could be handled, um, uh, more easily, perhaps. There are minor changes or adjustments that can be made. Uh, the priorities that I've got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna list them as quickly as I can. Um, I'm gonna just-
Larry, can I ask you, can I ask you if you're gonna list them? Can you send it to us in writing?
I can. I can. I can, but should I do it verbally as well?
Well, if we, if we, um, limit public comment to, uh, to three minutes or or a little more, it might be better for us to reflect on your comments, um, in writing.
Well, my comments are just identifying which rules.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me just give you, give them to you what they are, and you can write them down because it's quick. I'm not going to say rule this or rule that. I'm just gonna say a number and a letter. Okay, 5D and 15 deals with agenda. That should be combined and treated as one. The next one, 5F is public comment. I propose to submit and draft and circulate a complete revision of that section, and I'll try to have that done within the next 10 days. Uh, 6 is parliamentary guidelines. Uh, there are questions of recommending Roberts, uh, rather than Masons, and I'm recommending a, a council workshop or training to make sure that all the council members really understand what parliamentary guidelines are. Another one that I've got, however, the term council leadership has no existing rule. Council leadership is thrown around loosely, but the only two people that have ever been known, noted about have been the president and vice president. There may have been other council committee members who've appeared, but there have been other people who go beyond what I think it should be. I think council leadership needs to be defined as a separate rule. 5A deals with executive sessions, and it goes back primarily to what we encountered last summer. But I think we're looking at the fact that executive sessions needs a very, very close review of what is to be done, how it's been abused and the violations. Um, then the other ones deal with, I call them the 11 trio, 11, 11A and 11B dealing with committees. And that one is clearly going to be something that the Committee on Committees is going to be involved with also. Uh, the same with liaisons. That's 11C. Uh, the Code of Conduct, I've already submitted a comment on the 29th of October, and I've not seen any feedback on that at all. You may have discussed it, but I have no idea what it was. So, uh, Chris, I'll be glad to send this to, to all of you, um.
Send it to Cindy. Send it to Cindy so she can disseminate.
I can send it out to her, and she'll send it to you, and then the question becomes, if we're gonna have a discussion in the future, I want to be a part of it.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate that, Larry. And thank you for your investment of time and your care to, um, to have us do our best job. Uh, the, um, uh, the town attorney has told us, and this is, um, uh, something that Ms. Nobr has, um, inherited, is going by Mason's rules because they're tailored for, um, legislative, um, bodies like ours, is, if, if I understand correctly. So that's why, um, Mason's has been the default, um, go-to manual.
If, if I may, Madam Chair?
Please.
Karen Nobr, Town Attorney. So, um, my understanding is actually Roberts is the set of rules that is more often used by town councils. Um, Mason's is the rules that are used by state legislative bodies. So we have been using Mason's. I suspect in most regards, they're probably very similar. Um, but we could certainly make a change to Roberts if that's what the committee chooses to do. Um, again, they're, they're advisory. They're not, you know, set in stone, but they, you know, it's very helpful to have a source to look to when issues come up. Um, but I do think it's Roberts that most town councils have actually been using.
Uh, thank you very much.
Um, And if I could, just to respond to one other thing that Mr. Moran said, there have been no open meeting law violations by the town council, and the Attorney General has just confirmed that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'll canvass the committee. What do you think, um, about, um, entertaining our default, um, manual going to Roberts rules? Uh, and I'm learning, and we have to, um, probably get a copy for the, um, for the office.
I, I would just say that if people are more comfortable with that, I've heard comments that, you know, they don't have access to Mason's, that Mason's is, uh, pick a number. I don't know what it is, Karen. Two, 300 pages long, whatever.
Yeah.
As opposed to Roberts, it's maybe 100. Uh, I've got a couple of copies of Roberts, but not with me at the moment. Uh, I think it comes down to comfort. Uh, what we as a council, and particularly our legal staff is comfortable with. Uh, we don't want to be sitting there with a book paging through it, you know, every time a question comes up, trying to find something, and if, if legal is, uh, comfortable with Mason, and, uh, you know, the, the council is brought up, perhaps brought up to speed on a Mason, maybe that's the way to go. But, you know, I, I think I could deal with either.
Any other comment from the committee members? Kristen, please. Counselor Turkelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, to Larry's question about some form of training, I mean, we have a, you know, you're looking at a manual that's 300 pages, so to try to train us on something that probably people spend years studying, is there some form of training with Mason's that you think that as a council would be useful for us to have in a shortened, obviously abbreviated version, because we don't have time to study Mason's manual to the depth of 300 pages?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure whether training on procedural rules would be all that helpful. I mean, as issues come up, um, I do look to Mason's, you know, often I can anticipate before a meeting what is, what may come up, and I look. Um, or if I need to during the meeting, you know, the council leadership has been good about taking a few minutes break if I need to double check. Um, there's a lot in there, so I'm just not sure what I would pick and choose to train you all on. Um, I know we've talked about other training for the council, and that's something we can certainly, you know, think about, but, um, I'm, I'm just not sure how helpful that really would be. But if it's something you all think would be helpful, then we could certainly try to put something together.
I'm not, I'm not advocating for that per se. I guess I just thought if you thought there was 10 main topics that would be the 10 most important things that you think we all should know, I mean, that is something I would entertain. Um, and I guess my only other question is whether you, you know, you and Allison and others in the legal department feel that we should be moving away from Mason's because there's some benefit to us, and I guess I would be curious to see what, you know, listen to what you have to say about that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess on that, you know, I've, I've gotten very used to Mason's. I have that book that where I have everything flagged for all the things that I keep going back to, so, you know, from a personal point of view, I'm pretty comfortable with that. Again, I, I suspect how they treat things are not that different. So if, if we did switch, it probably wouldn't be that big a deal. Um, it may be something that you hold off on and discuss with the council and then see, because certainly we're gonna make, as Chris said, uh, Counselor Clark said, we'll probably make more changes when this comes before the council. So maybe that's an issue to flag and say, you know, we thought about it, we left it alone, but, but, you know, maybe it's a good topic for discussion with the council.
Thank you. Counselor Burdick?
Thanks. I was just gonna say, I think it's sort of a tempest in a teacup scenario for the, all the, the use that there's not going to be a lot of maneuvering that's gonna be going on based on the minutia of the rules. For Roberts, for, you know, does it really matter? I mean, the operative points of these documents are, you know, you second, uh, you know, you make a motion, you second a motion, you go through this, you open the hearing, you close the hearing, you do all the the various things. I mean, I don't really think it's, I, I don't, I don't see any value in A, training, any, you know, whatever kind of training you would envision for that, because we all understand the very basic functions of this process. And change now, I don't really see what it would, how that would make any difference, whatever. Do you know what I mean? We're, we're, we're kind of skating on the surface of we don't delve very deep into the, the parliamentary procedure to really necessitate a change or a training, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
And if I could add, um, the rules actually control the town council rules, and then if there's still some need for clarity, then we look to Mason's. We don't go first to Mason's. We go for the, we go to the town council rules. And we did add some additional clarification to some of the motions in the rules to explain this is debatable, this is not, this requires a two-thirds vote. So I, I think we did try to beef that up a little bit in the rules themselves. Um, but I tend to agree with Counselor Burdick.
I hear you. Counselor Lucky, do you have any comment on this?
Well, the only comment I would make would be the comment of access. And I thought it had been brought up that Mason's is impossible to access unless you pay for a subscription. I don't know if Roberts is more attainable. That would be, uh, one thing that might, uh, need us to move to Roberts. I mean, if there's, on the face of it, very little impact, but when it comes down to access to it and the friendliness it is, or the readability, if one is a little bit friendlier or easier to access than the other, I would think we'd go with that. Why would we make it more difficult? And especially since, um, you know, we are not a state legislative body or above that perhaps uses this. That would be my point.
I think you do have to buy whichever one you're using. I don't think you can just get it for free.
Um,
I don't know what the difference in price might be. I don't know how, you know.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I do, I, I did a little research, and it is, it is difficult and beefy in what Counselor Tamish said, um, if it's going from 300 pages to half that. Uh, that might make it, um, how do I want to say? More accessible to those who want to do the deeper dive. Um, now, in my new position, I, I have taken interest in trying to understand the, um, underpinnings for, um, for running the meeting, uh, properly. And I also see that there's, um, more cheat sheets or, um, resources that are available online that supports Roberts as opposed to Mason's. But, um, we can, we can defer this to another time and see how the, how it, um, um, works for the legal staff, because you're the ones who are doing the heavy lifting with, uh, referencing the, um, all the, the 300 pages worth of, um, of guidance.
And, and I appreciate that, but at the end of the day, we will use whichever one you guys pick. It'll be fine.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you for your suggestions, Larry. Um, I, um, moving forward, I would like to, um, go through the, the list, and I should, um, say, Larry, I don't fault you, you wouldn't, since you didn't have access to the, um, to the later meetings. Um, the, we have renumbered some of the items, so you'll hear as we go through it, um, how the, um, the latest rendition that was updated on the 26th of December, uh, looks. So if Attorney Nobr can, um, take us through this, you can, um, do a sweep through this, the clean copy, which quite frankly is very refreshing for me to read and not having gone through that.
I was going to say, I'm going to work off of the clean copy. Um, the red line one is, is impossible at this point. And I realize that when I made the latest updates, I didn't highlight them as I had been doing, but I went through them earlier today, so I think I can pretty much flag for you everywhere I made a change. But I think working off of the clean copy would be easier for everyone to follow. So.
If I may, before we start, on the, on the first Counselor Code of Conduct, so that, um, Mr. Moran is aware, this was requested by our committee of the Town Attorney's Office to insert the Code of Conduct. Uh, we learned about that when we went to the, um, new counselors, um, training, uh, a couple of years ago, some of us did, and, um, some of the towns, some of the municipalities, uh, lay this Code of Conduct to set the tone. And, um, it was requested that this be included, so it's not driven by the town attorney. It's driven by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Clark. Um, okay, so going through the changes, if you start with Rule 2, the very first line, it references, because that's where it says the president self-serve as a non-voting ex officio member of all council committees. So I flagged, um, Counselor Turkelson has a question. I'll stop.
Sorry.
I'm just wondering if we could go maybe paragraph by paragraph on each page, because you're going, I just wanted to make a comment under the Counselor Code of Conduct, or do you want me to just wait until you've gone through this, and then if there's anything else that I?
No, go ahead.
Under the Counselor, under the Counselor Code of Conduct, the, um, Conflict of Interest Law Education and Training, is it true, Vice President Clark, that we, that Cindy can no longer access that correctly?
That's correct.
So I'm wondering if we want to add a line here that those, um, will be handed in to the, a town council administrator, just so that it's understood in there that we, that we need to do that to make her life easy?
Cindy, I don't want to speak for you. Can you chime in, please?
And actually, if I could chime in too, there is one thing that you would hand in, which is where you acknowledge receipt of the summary of the law, but there's a separate thing, which is an online training program. And so you would do that on your own, and then there is a certificate of completion, and I think you could email that to Cindy.
That's how I've been receiving most of the people that are completing it so far this year for the boards, committees, and commissions, is once they do the training, because some of them are up this year, it's a two-year, uh, certification, so when they send it to me, they send it to me via email. But prior to that, I used to be able to go in and see it. Now I can't. The state has taken it over, and you have to assign a private email to them, and they send you the reminder when your, um, two years is, is coming close. They'll send you an email, and then you gotta redo the certification, but they're tracking it now, not, not me anymore.
My understanding is it's possible, and I can speak with President Tamish about this, that, um, uh, the Human Resource Director, Bill Cole, uh, may have access to town employees' uh, uh, compliance with the, um, certification for, um, open meeting law. But, um, I'm wondering if we can request if he would also have access to the counselors and committee members.
But I'm just wondering if we want to, we're stating here that we need to do it. Why wouldn't we just state, and once it's completed, to hand in the completion certificate to the town administrator? I, I guess I'm just trying to clean that up so that we don't have to worry about that, Chris, and ask somebody else to do one more thing, and, you know, it's just a suggestion.
I understand, but it's because it hasn't been done. And we have no, we have no way to, um, insert ourselves to, to ask for, is, has your, you have a three-year term, and every two years you have to re-up your open meeting law certification, so it's out of sync a little bit. There's no, um.
Well, you, you have to certify receipt of the law every year, and you have to do the online training every two years.
Right.
But I think I, I could add a sentence after, after the sentence about conflict of interest law and just say, counselors shall provide copies of their completion or their certification and completion certificates to the council administrator. I, I, I think I could do that.
Fine.
I, 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 I know it's not exactly germane right here, but, you know, when we get into the town code, I would like to see something in the town code that all committee members, they'll turn them in on a yearly basis.
They are actually required, they are required by the law to do that. They're not exempt.
No, but I'm saying, I was gonna say, I've had my hand up.
Turn in a physical certificate.
I understand.
It's a, it's a state requirement. Thank you, sorry. It's a state requirement that all of us and all the, the boards, committees, and commissions have it, and the state is the custodian. And if you had a, if I were to file a complaint, I'd have to file it through the open, for the, through the Ethics Commission, who maintains these records, right? I mean, so.
Yes.
Well, I believe you do now, because they changed it, it's a new program this year, and I think I would have to confirm that, but I believe the state is keeping track of it now, but prior to their update of their program, it was always internal at the town.
Was it the clerk that did it before?
It was supposed to be maintained by the clerk. I don't know if that was actually the practice in our town, but, for this, but, um,
You're just saying that.
We can confirm that. I just did all the training the other day, and I, and I, I believe they have a record. I, I'm not sure if HR has their own record, and I know I emailed my certificate stuff to, um, you know, within my department, so that there'd be a record.
Right.
Yeah.
That was my only point, that it's a state, it's state mandated, and the state is the custodian, but, so we're just adding it in that Cindy would also be the custodian. Anybody who wants to find the information can, can ask the Ethics Commission.
I just want to double check and make sure that the Ethics Commission does in fact get that, because I know when they were doing ethics reform back in 2008, they actually wanted the Ethics Commission to keep track of everything, and I was like, absolutely not. Because there's just too many public employees. Um, but I think now that they have this online training program and everything's automated, um, I would, I just need to confirm that in fact they do have that. I think they do. I think you're correct. Um, but it's also helpful to know internally, because if Cindy is not getting those, those certificates from the council, better for her to reach out than to wait for the state to call and say, why aren't you doing it? It, it would just be, I think, you know, both would not be a bad thing.
True.
To Counselor Burdick's point, um, I do understand that it's the, uh, state requirement, but there has, in my point of view, if there's not any assurance of compliance or enforcement, that is. Go ahead, Counselor Tamish.
I, I was just gonna say, uh, I, I think that it's far better to be proactive and make sure that we get the certificates than to wait for a problem or an issue to come up and then say, well, this guy hasn't done the training in four years. Why hasn't anybody on the town done anything about it? So to, to be ahead of any potential problems, I think is, is, is the way to go. And if that means everybody physically does a certificate, or we have somehow figure out how we get access to who has and has not done the training, I think it was important.
Again, I think when you do it on the online training, and I think they also have the ability to get the certi, the, you know, they give you the summary of the law at that time, and you also, um, acknowledge your receipt, you can download the, your certificate that you've just acknowledged, and then you can just email that. Sure.
Yeah, the town attorney's correct. That's how, you can, you can print out both certifications, and typically what happens is somebody will email me those as- and typically what happens is somebody will email me those as an attachment. I'll print them out, and I attach them to their appointment letter that was currently given out, so that if anybody has any question as to whether they completed it, I just go to the file cabinet, pull out the folder, and it's attached to their appointment letter.
But I do, it's a good thing to get ahead of, as Counselor Tamish said, that, you know, if we know counselors haven't done it, we should be reaching out to say, "Hey, you need to do it." It is a state.
Yep.
Thank you. I think that we're in agreement on that. Thanks.
So I can add that, a sentence along those lines.
Appreciate that. Anything further, Counselor Turkleson?
With respect to the next sentence on the open meeting law, I think all of that, and Cindy can correct me, but I believe the open meeting law certifications go to the town clerk. I believe she hands.
That's right. They're supposed to, yeah.
She hands that out when you get elected, and is that every, I can't remember, is that, it's not just when you're elected, right? It's every couple of years or something?
Yeah, and some of the counselors do. I keep a folder for the council in the office as to who's completed it, so if anybody had any question from the public, I could ask. So the council's very good about emailing it to me once they've completed it.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Counselor Turkleson?
On Rule Number One, it says council officers. Do we want to say election of council officers? Because it's really what that whole paragraph is about, right? It's just the rule is how do we elect our council officers?
Go for that.
I don't know. What I'm struggling with in reading this entire document is sometimes I get lost in the headings and how the rules are numbered. It really doesn't make sense to my brain, but that's just my brain, so I'm just throwing it out there that really Rule One is how we elect council officers. Other than that, that, you know.
Makes sense to me. Any objection to that?
No.
All right. Can you make that? Go ahead, Counselor Tamish.
While we're on this issue, there was some discussion, if a counselor were absent, for example, for illness or whatever, on that meeting in December when we had the election, and you had an even number of counselors, and you came out with an even vote, how would that be decided? Would you postpone the election till all counselors were present, or?
You're supposed to, you're supposed to keep voting. You're supposed to keep taking a vote until you guys figure it out.
Okay, okay.
All right, anything else on Page One? And Attorney Ober, you'll make that adjustment with the heading on Rule One?
Yep.
Please. Thank you. Okay, anything on Rule, on Page Two?
So what I changed on Page Two was the beginning of Rule Two, which says, "Except as set forth in Rule 11A." And so that's just a cross-reference to where we address the situation that was referenced earlier in this meeting, which is when, you know, Counselor Tamish was appointed, he was the vice president, now he's the president. I think it does make sense, if you're already appointed to a committee, to not change horses midstream kind of thing, because I just feel like these are time-limited committees. You should get the work done, and then the rule should be back in effect. So I think that's what we had talked about before. So that's what got added to Rule Two, is accept as set forth in Rule 11A, and then when we get to Rule 11A, you can see what changed.
I like that. That's the first thing I did, is go and look at 11A as when you, when I read that again. Any other comments? Counselor Turkleson?
Just so that, again, my brain can understand this, the ex officio member of all council committees. When we say council committees, I know we didn't want to list them here, but just so that I'm clear, because I started to get so confused between committees and ad hoc committees and standing committees, and I'm like, what committee are we, so the council committees, can somebody just give me like an example of three council committees, so I know what?
There's 43 of them.
Okay, so that's all of those council committees, so.
No, it's not the committees of the town.
Because it's not.
It's not the committees of the town.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it would be the TIF, TIF-TI.
Oh, thank you.
The Appointment, excuse me, the Appointments Committee, those are the two standing committees we have right now, and then the five ad hocs that is under the council.
And we talk about them later on in the document. We differentiate between standing and ad hoc committees of the council and basically standing committees of the town. And the standing committees of the town are as set forth in the code, with the exception of the Appointments Committee, which is a standing committee of the council.
So when we say the non-voting ex officio member of all council committees, do we want to put in parentheses, standing committees of the council, ad hoc committees of the council? I feel like this, all council committees, is too confusing, because if I don't understand it, as I just did not understand it, because I remembered we had this conversation, and it still isn't clear to me, I'm feeling like we need to fix that, that part there to make it really clear that we're not talking about the 43 committees.
Right, we're not, right. So I could say, as you said.
Or of all council committees, I don't know what the right word is, notwithstanding town committees of the town or something.
What you said, Chris, Kristen, all standing and ad hoc committees of the council. Is that clear? Because I think that's clearer.
Yeah, I just think it needs clarity there, because it's.
Yeah, I made the mistake, so I agree.
Yeah.
With Counselor Turkleson. The reason I made that assumption is because all committees are appointed by the council, so I saw them as council committees, but I understand.
But the president's not serving on all the committees of the town.
I understood, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything further on Page Two?
So the only other change is, at the bottom of Page Two begins Rule 5A, and so the reorganized rules, as we discussed at the last meeting, we reorganized all the 5A, 5B, moved them around, made some changes. That's now in this document, as we discussed. So that's not a change in and of itself, but I'm just noting that that was put in there. I don't have another change until Rule 5B, unless there's anything you want to talk about before 5B.
Counselor Turkleson, please.
This is where I started to get a little, like, not confused, but is there any, is there any sense in having, I guess it's just like a note-taking thing in my head, Rule Five, Meetings of the Town Council, 5A, time and place of meeting, 5B, like, it's kind of weird how we have Rule 5A, 5B, like, we don't have a rule heading, and then we start to kind of delineate 5A, 5B, as opposed to making it like number five, number six, number seven. I mean, they're all related, but how are they related? Because it's, it's a rule about meetings of the town council. That's what all of these are talking about, right?
We actually had a Rule Five, and then I think Counselor Clark wanted us to start with just 5A, 5B, 5C. So whatever you all want to do, we can do.
You could put a heading that just said, "Rule 5A through D, Meetings of the Town Council."
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying, is to kind of let, you know, it's the way you note-take.
Clarice.
In your brain, you know, but.
I'm fine with that. Any other input? Thank you for that suggestion.
I don't, again, I don't have anything until 5B, so, and it's a very.
Go ahead.
It's a very minor change, so I mean, 5B, in the first sentence, I just took out the words "each month," so instead of saying, "With every effort made to schedule those meetings," let me see, I think it said, "Except in the months of July and August, when only one meeting will be held on the third Thursday." It previously said, "Will be held each month on the third Thursday." So I took out "each month," and it just says, "Except in the months of July and August, when only one meeting will be held on the third Thursday."
That's clear. Thank you.
Okay. So that's the only thing on that page, so I don't know if there's any.
Any other input?
Counselor Turkleson?
That's it? Okay, then, Page Four.
Okay, so Rule 5C, in the first paragraph, I changed the reference to present, from president to the presiding officer. So there were two spots, I believe. Yeah, at the beginning of the meeting, I wrote, "The presiding officer, instead of the president, shall announce the names of any absent counselors, and then the presiding officer shall note the arrival of any counselor who joins the meeting late."
Okay.
Okay, then, in the third paragraph of Rule 5C, you had asked if I could just break up one of the sentences, because it was quite long, so I did that. So I think it starts with, "The meeting may be delayed for an additional reasonable period to allow for a further attempt to try to resolve the problems, or the meeting may resume." Stop the sentence there, and then said, "In such case, the presiding officer may choose." So nothing substantive, just broke it up into slightly smaller sentences, shorter sentences.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, then, in Rule 5D, and I actually want to make a change, you had just asked for me to unbold measure and non-measure, and I did that, and I also indented them, but I feel like I should not indent them, because when you indent like that, it's a direct quote, and it's not a direct quote from the charter. Like, I have to go back and look, but I know it's not exact, so I feel like it should not be indented for that reason.
Okay.
Then, I don't know if there are any other comments. I don't think I made another change until, well, why don't we just go through each page, because I didn't make another change for a while, so.
Sure. On Rule 5E, under Agenda Setting, I recall we had this discussion, and I went through some of my notes but didn't find, it says, "The council agenda, including the town manager's report, complete with documentation, shall be delivered to the town counselors and posted in accordance with the open meeting law." And I recall we had a discussion on how it shall be delivered. It doesn't specify how, but I'm fine the way it is. I just wanted to make sure everybody's okay with that. Counselor Turkleson?
I just looked back, and originally, under Agenda Setting, there was a line in there about, and maybe we don't need it, there was a line in there, that the president may, in case of necessity, add additional items after the deadline. Do we not need that sentence in there? It was a sentence from the original document, which I was looking for. It just was weird that we took that line out, because it basically says, if we need to add something after it's been posted, that the town manager and the town council leadership has the right to add things out in necessity.
Let me look at the red line version to see if I can find what you're talking about.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. What rule are we in? We're in 5E?
Yes.
All right, this is, switch glasses, hang on.
Of course, I can't find where it was taken out.
Let me see if I can find it.
Would that be more governed by state law, you know, requiring of the posting of the agenda, however, emergency measures may be added if they're unanticipated?
Well, yeah, I mean, it is governed by the open meeting law, but we also have more flexibility, because if we're posting the Friday before, that's way outside the 48 hours. So if we have something that Monday that needs to be added, we can easily add it, because we're still outside of the 48 hours.
It says here that, it says, "The council president and/or the town manager may, in case of necessity, approve any additional items for inclusion in the agenda after said deadline." That line has been taken out, and I just don't know if that would be a line that would be important, because it is stating that, out of necessity, they have the ability to change that, so it's just, just a question about that. It's on the original, it's on the original 5D filing deadlines.
Yeah, I see it.
Just, just asking more for completeness, because we took it out.
I feel like it's implicit in the authority of, I mean, I mean, I'm not sure what the main case of necessity means, whether it's the reference to the open meeting law requirement, that it was something that's either an emergency item or something that was not anticipated within 48 hours of the meeting. But again, we have been adding things, like, we just added something to this meeting, to the upcoming meeting agenda, that had kind of slipped through the cracks, and then I realized, oh, we were supposed to get that on the agenda, and I think it was Monday, and it was like, well, it's Monday, it's, we're still fine to add whatever we want. So I'm just not sure what it really adds, if you, you can do it, as long as you're complying with the open meeting law.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it seemed like, it seemed like an explicit detail that we took out, making something more implicit, and I thought what we wanted to do is be as explicit as we could in using, you know, these rules to explain how we govern, but I'm just, just as long as we've talked about it, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if other counselors feel differently.
I'm okay with that, the way it is. I understand what Attorney Ober is saying. Any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Turkleson.
And under the appointments requiring two reads, is there a reason why we make appointments a two-read under, I mean, we say measures require two reads and appointments require two reads. I'm just wondering what the background of that is.
My understanding of that, and I do believe we talked about that maybe early on in these meetings, is that they are not measures, so they are not required under the charter to be two reads, but I think it is a process, an extra process thing that the council has decided makes sense, so that people in the town can see what you're doing. And Cindy, you may want to speak to that, because you've certainly been doing this longer.
Yeah, it was also for the general public, also, to see who was being considered for different boards, committees, and commissions, because it gives them an opportunity, in fact, I just had an example that somebody had put in an application for the Mid-Cape Cultural Council, and not realizing that there was a conflict of interest, but had she not been listed and/or listed on an agenda, I would have not known, and the Appointments Committee would have appointed her, because it wasn't disclosed on the application, not because she didn't want it to disclose, it was because she didn't understand what the conflict was until it was explained to her by the Attorney General. So it gives people an opportunity to see who's actually going to be coming up to be considered for appointment, so that's why it goes through two reads.
And also, because it's not a measure, that's why you can suspend that rule occasionally, because if it was a measure, you couldn't.
Right.
Counselor Burdick, I saw your hand up.
That's what I was going to say. I was just going to say what Cindy said, because when we discussed it, transparency, whatever.
Thank you. Okay, continue, Attorney Ober.
Okay, so Page Five, Rule 5E, 5F, 5G, any issues?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Next page. 5H is public comment. So that's something that we definitely made changes to. There are no new changes there.
Thank you. Looks like no comment here. Continue.
Okay, the next page starts with 6A. I didn't change anything on that page, so I don't know if any of you have anything.
So Counselor Turkleson, I was going to say, in the same vein as the Groups of Five, did you want to propose a heading?
I don't have a heading. I don't have a heading, because it's kind of, well, I mean, it's to do with the meeting particulars, or the guidelines, or details, or I don't really know what the right word is.
It's actually procedural matters, I mean-
Okay, Rule 6, procedures of a town council.
Yeah. Procedural something, I'll make something up.
Thank you.
But that's really what that is. And if you look at 6D, we did add some language that I think may not have been in there before to flesh out a little bit with some of the motions, you know, whether it's debatable or not debatable, or a little bit of that. And that comes from Masons, because that's not, that wasn't in, you know, there was.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the next page, 6E, 6F, 6G, seven, and starting 8A. We can figure out a heading for 8A when we get to it. Any comments on that? And let me just look at what eight. So, Rule 8, I guess I would say, is votes, although there's only 8A and 8B, and 8A is called votes, so.
Maybe vote-taking, or voting? Something like that.
Okay, I'll look at that, and we'll add a heading. Okay, so, the next page.
I have something on 8B. I was wondering, I'm reading the second paragraph under 8B. "Every council present, when the question is put, shall vote yes, no, abstained, blah, blah, blah." Does that need a word? Like, every counselor present when the question is put forth? Put forward? Is put? Made me reread that again, when I first came across it, with fresh eyes.
I'm okay either way, whatever you guys want. I think it's when the question is put to a vote, when the question is put to a vote, so I could add that, if you'd like.
Okay, something like that. It looked like put needed where it was going to be put.
Okay, does that make more sense, when the question is put to a vote?
Yeah, to me.
Okay, I'll make that change.
Any other comment?
You might want to put it at the beginning. When the question, when each question is put to a vote, comma, "Every counselor present shall vote yes, no." It just may be a reorganization of the sentence.
Okay.
I like that. Anything else for page nine?
Yes, my standard comment, that Rule 11A, B, C, D needs a heading, because I think this is part of the confusion about... I mean, maybe, I don't know what the rule would be. I mean, it's, A is committees of the council, then we have ad hoc committees, standing committees. I mean, maybe the heading is just committees of the council. And then maybe 11A is standing committees.
Well, 11C is standing committees. So if we make Rule 11 the heading, "Committees of the council," which makes sense. I'm just trying to think what 11A, whether I can merge 11A into something else, although there's a lot there. Is 11A about appointments? Or is it more than that?
It's more than that.
It's more than that.
If I could, Madam Chair, Allison Cogliano, Assistant Town Attorney. I think one of our previous versions had a better organization. And I just remember going over the confusion between the committees, so I think if we look back to an older version, and maybe Counselor Turkleson, if you want to look back and see if one of the other ones does make more sense to you, because I just think that it was originally organized differently, and it made more sense, but... So, yeah, I mean, I think Karen, I can look back and see which one that I might be referring to, but I just have a memory of this looking a little bit differently, and maybe that's clearer.
Yeah, so before, it was Rule 11 was committees of the council, then 11A was ad hoc, 11B, no, yeah, was committee parameters and guidelines. I wonder if we could make...
Could we make 11A committee guidelines and parameters?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, that's what I'm looking at. That might work. Allison, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I think making Rule 11 committees of the council makes sense, because then-
I do too.
You're going in, and you're saying, okay, an ad hoc committee is a committee of the council, here's more about that. A standing committee is a committee of the council, here's more about that. And I think that that clarifies, that clears up the confusion between all of the different kinds of committees. And then, maybe... So, do we talk about committees of the town in 11D? Is that where it is?
We, yes. 11D, oh, yes, because maybe we make that-
A new rule, maybe?
New rule, yeah. That would confuse it, because otherwise, it's all under the heading of committees of the council, and that's talking about liaisons to town committees.
Correct, so I wonder if we make that Rule 12, and then-
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good catch. I can make that Rule 12, and then shift 12 and 13, and everything.
And then maybe Rule 12, it'll, it'll, the title could be "Committees of the Town," or something like that, so that there's that clear separation.
Well-
I don't know.
It says liaisons to boards, committees, and commissions of the town, and that whole section is about liaisons. So I think that's okay, but I do, I do agree with you that it should be pulled out of 11.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that that will clear up some of the confusion Counselor Turkleson was catching.
Yeah, I think that's right. And then I can, I can make 11A, I'll look at it again, but committee guidelines and parameters, and then, I think, all under the heading of Rule 11, "Committees of the Council."
Yeah.
Now, isn't Rule 11C, standing committees? Town committees?
No, it's of the council.
Okay.
Right, so I think that's where some of the confusion would be.
Well, let me see, actually, standing committee, wait, 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 she might be right. Shall select a chair who will organize the committee and be responsible, and shall be the spokesperson. You know, that's a good question. 11C, I think it was supposed to be standing committees of the council.
Matters with the council, town?
No, I think, I think that is still standing committees of the council. Which makes sense, because these are the town council rules. When we get to the code, we'll look at that, but...
Yeah, so then, once that's 11B, under committees of the council, that will be clearer, and then Rule 12 will go on to, because really-
Well, that'll still be 11C, so it won't change. It'll just be, Rule 11 will be committees of the council. Rule 11A will become committee guidelines and parameters. 11B will be ad hoc, 11C will be standing, and then 11D will turn into Rule 12 to take it out of, you know, of the council.
Okay.
And then 12 will become 13, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Turkleson.
Under, on page 10, I think in the, talks about, it might be an ad hoc. When we talk about allowing residents on ad hoc committees, resident is the same word as voter in the town of Barnstable? Or those, I just want to make sure that the language is clear enough that we can delineate resident from voter. They're probably the same thing, but-
Well, you can be a resident and not be registered to vote, right?
Okay, so, okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we're using the right, the right word there, so, thank you.
Did we use the word resident? Because I think we typically use registered voters, and I think-
Well, I guess the question is, is do we want to limit participation in ad hocs to registered voters? Or do we just want it to be any resident? And I'm not making a judgment about that.
I think the reason you do it is because if you're a registered voter, then we know you're a resident. The converse isn't true. Like, if you're not registered to vote, we don't really know if you're a resident of the town. We don't know if you live in Florida most of the year. We don't know. But if you're a registered voter, then you, you have to be a resident of the town to be registered to vote. So I think registered voter is the right way to do it.
I agree.
So I don't know if I used the word resident anywhere. If I did, let me know. I don't see it.
I'll take, I'll take a look.
Okay, but it should be registered voter.
I see registered voter, thank you.
Okay, anything on that page? That's page 10.
Go ahead, to page 11.
Okay. Oh, actually, sorry, I did make a couple of changes on page 10. I apologize, but I flagged these things. At the top of the page, I added, it's not a full paragraph at the top, but it says, "Except that a counselor already serving as chair or vice-chair of an ad hoc committee may continue in that role if subsequently elected president or vice-president of the council."
Thank you. And that would address what one of Mr. Morin's concerns. Thank you.
And that would, I just want to make sure we're not changing, it's still, it's still Rule 11A, so the Rule 2, which refers to that, is still correct. Okay, and then in the next paragraph, the same thing. I added, "The president shall be a non-voting ex officio member, except that the president may continue to be a voting member of any ad hoc committee on which he or she serves if such service predates his or her election as president." So again, it's intended to let you finish the work of your temporary ad hoc committee without blowing everything up.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we had talked about that at the last meeting, so that's where those two things are. So that's all I changed on that page. And then the next page, aside from the renumbering that we just talked about, I didn't, I don't have anything else. I don't know if any of you do.
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Okay. The next page, page 12, didn't change anything. Actually, I didn't change anything for the rest of the document, so, any comments or questions that you all have?
Karen, just FYI, in Rule 16, you do still have something highlighted there. The two-thirds piece, I think you changed that last time.
Oh, you're right, I'll fix that. But yeah, we discussed that last time. So that's not a new change, but I'll fix that, thank you. Thought I caught everything.
I know, I also thought that I adequately read through it all, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Counselor Turkleson?
Thank you for letting me work through those multiple rule brackets, because that really was doing my head in.
No, that's helpful.
No, I think it improves the document. It do.
So, shall we meet again to look at the final draft before we bring it to the council? And along with Mr. Morin's comments?
I don't know, I think we're good. I think we've exhausted this. I think we have. I think what we did today was administrative. It was for clarity purposes. I mean, I've read the whole thing. I think it reads okay. I think we've clarified where we can. We've gone into a level of detail that wasn't there. If we get more detailed, then it becomes cumbersome. So, I'm happy with going this, so we can start moving forward to the code. I think we've done enough. I don't, I don't see any value added, I don't. Maybe other people do, I think it's enough.
But I would just, when I'll be-
Counselor Burdick has hand up, sorry.
Sorry, I don't know, should I raise my hand or not? Next time, I'm just going to flirt it out. But, I agree with Betty. I think we've had plenty of this. I think we should just send it along.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Tamish.
What I was just going to suggest was that we all get the updated, you know, clean copy. And if anyone has any concerns, we can schedule another meeting, or address those concerns, perhaps. But, other than that, just to go forward with it, as long as everybody concurs, looking at a clean copy.
I'm fine with that suggestion, good idea. Anybody else? All right, sounds-
I think what I would get to you, once I figure out how to do it, is a clean copy and a redlined against the original rules.
Oh, that's a good one.
So that you see what the original looks like, because that's what the rest of the council really needs to see, is what do the rules look like today? What's the red line, and what's the clean version?
That's a really good idea. Thank you.
Do we even need the red line? I mean, you, like, the way I did it was I looked at the original, and then I looked at what we had, and I just kind of put them side by side, because the redlining gets like-
Well, we've done a bunch of redlining, like, over and over and over, and moved stuff around, and it's gotten crazy, which is why I want to take the original rules and then do a compare document, so it shows the final thing that we ended up with, redlined against the original, plus a clean version. So if you don't find it helpful, you don't have to look at it. But I think if someone wants to know, what did it say before, and what did you change, it would show it.
Good idea. All right. So it looks like the consensus is to move forward with this?
Yeah.
I'll pass it along to President Tamish.
Very good.
For putting it on the agenda.
Okay, so I will make a bunch of changes and get it back to all of you very soon.
Okay, so I would anticipate probably trying to get this on the 30th agenda, then. If no one has objections to the clean copy.
Okay, that sounds, go ahead, Counselor Burdick.
Just one thing, so, then, what, so once you, when will you distribute it to the whole council? Prior, just prior to the final meeting? Or, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the sooner we get it to everybody, meaning, you know, the redlined and the clean one, the better it will be, I think. Otherwise, you know, hopefully, the longer people get to look at it, the easier it will be at the meeting, when we're actually going to be voting on it.
Agreed.
That was my only question. I would like, you know, the sooner we can get everybody reading it, better.
Well, if we're putting it on the January 30th agenda, it'll go out five days before the 30th happens, so they'll have the full five days to look at the document.
I'd still think more than that, if you give them, you know what I mean? The sooner the better. Though that is fine, five days is, seems should be adequate.
But you know what? The first meeting in February is the following Thursday, because the January one got moved out. So we could even shoot for that meeting and give people a little extra time to look at it. Because I think you're right. I think people should have time to actually look at it.
Well, depends on when Attorney Noberg gets us-
I get it too.
-a copy. And if we all say, fine by me, fine by me, there's five of us, and let Cindy know, so we don't violate the quorum, as soon as the five are done, Cindy, you can let Counselor Tamish know that, as President Deacon is ready to be shared with others, even in advance of putting it on the agenda.
Sure.
According to-
That's appropriate, Karen, that once it is-
As long as you don't discuss it amongst each other, or reply all to the email that the document is sent on with any questions. If you have questions about it, any counselors, they should be emailing Attorney Noberg or Assistant Attorney Allison Cogliano any questions they may have. Once they receive the document, hopefully, nobody hits reply all with any questions, because that is a violation of the open meeting law.
Right, so, when, I will get it all to you. I will wait in here and make sure you're all comfortable, and you can, as Cindy said, you should even do that individually, and not, you know, reply all to each other. And then, once I know that this committee is all set, I will send an email to Cindy and say, here are the documents, please. You know, I'll send my usual email, saying, please provide this to the council. And I will make it clear that if a counselor has a question, they should con- And I will make it clear that if a counselor has a question, they should contact me. They should not be reply all, you know, people generally are not replying all, like, everyone seems to have that down, but, you know, never hurts to remind everyone. But I think, yeah, we should just work, we'll see when, when everything gets sent out to you, what day it is and how much time people have, and whether, which agenda meeting you wanna get it on.
Okay.
Counselor Turkleson.
And, and I do appreciate Cindy telling us if the questions, um, are asked, that they need to go to you, just so that we're not going to say, Chris, who's the chair, um, for those questions?
Right, what you wanna do is you wanna avoid having any conversation with a quorum of this body, um, about the rules, outside of a properly noticed committee meeting.
Understood.
So you might wanna take a vote to delegate to me the final changes as discussed at this meeting, um, just to kinda maybe wrap it up.
Proudified it. I'll entertain such a motion. Does anybody? Okay, Counselor Tamish, move that question?
Second.
Second by Counselor Turkleson, all those in favor?
Oh, you have to roll call. Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Turkleson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yeah.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion, Attorney Nobur. And, um, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion that the, uh, minutes be accepted as printed?
Second.
All those in favor, do you wanna take a roll call? Roll call.
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Turkleson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so there is no next meeting to be announced, and that means I'll accept a motion. Go ahead, Counselor Tamish.
Uh, for Cynthia, to, uh, Mr. Morin's question, and while we were talking, I, I went back on the, uh, the website, and the, the videos of the last two meetings have not been posted. Do you, what, what would be the process on that?
Well, I'll reach out to web requests again, um, and get them up. Um, I usually, what happens is, once the meeting's recorded, it gets put in a folder, and then that link is posted on the, on the webpage, uh, by web requests, so I'll make sure that that's done. And I'll also make sure that the, um, agendas and meeting minutes are posted. I'll put a little rush on them. But he, he's one person that does everything for the town, um, no matter what it is. It, you know, and he does, he does a great job, it's just that it, you know, sometimes it does take a little bit longer, to get things up there, but once it's up there, you, you know that it's accurate and it's correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lutke?
I just wonder if we wanna have a little bit of discussion about the code in terms of, you know, keep things moving along here, how we might approach that in the next meeting.
I, I had been thinking about that. I'm just wondering if we should, um, have closure on this, because I, I don't know how long it might take for, uh, for it to linger at the council stage, uh, unless you wanna just proceed with, um, scheduling our next meeting for the code.
I'd like, I'd like to keep things moving, I mean, we still have those committees that haven't met, and we just need to, uh, to knock this stuff out. So, yeah, I would like to.
Counselor Tamish, please.
Just, just a concern, hopefully, nothing we're gonna do in the code will change anything that is referenced in the town council rule.
I, I understand that.
We're going to adopt, uh, so, I mean, that's just something we have to be aware of, that if we're going to adopt the rules, and they refer back to specific sections of the code, that we don't start renumbering and changing things in the code that are referenced.
So do you, uh, think it would be wise to hold off on bringing it to the whole council till we?
No, I, I, I don't think so, I think it's just something we have to be aware of.
Okay.
If I could make a couple of comments.
Please.
I spoke with, um, the town clerk this morning to ask her what her thoughts might be on, on, as we move forward with looking at the code. And she's going to give it some thought, but one of the things that she mentioned is, like, when we make changes to the code, we send everything to a company and they do the actual updates. And she said that that company could actually do a review to determine whether there are internal inconsistencies within the code. And so I asked her if she would try to get a cost estimate for what that might, um, involve, and that I would bring that to this committee for something for you to consider, because that might be a very efficient way, maybe not of doing everything, but of certainly, um, approaching part of this.
That sounds like a great idea.
And then the other thing I was thinking I could do is at one of our department head meetings, we meet twice a week. I could, I could ask department heads if there is anything in particular that they deal with, because everyone deals with different sections of the code, um, that they are finding problematic in any way, that we ought to be looking at. So I'm happy to do that, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea. Any objection?
Trying to get ahead of you guys a little bit, so.
Yeah, good idea. No, I, I know myself, I know I've, I've addressed this to you, that in some places, counselor, the word counselor is spelled with one L, and in other places it's spelled with two L, so I know that there's some, uh, something simple like that, but if there's some.
And I asked Ann about that, I said, you know, that, I knew that was a change that you were going to want, and I said, if we just amended the code to literally replace all spellings of X with Y, could the company easily do that? And she thought they could.
Good.
Yeah, we talked about that, I know that's your.
Thank you. So shall we look at the next meeting date to address the code? I actually have some dates that, um, that Sarah sent me for the, um, committee on committees. Do you wanna meet after the MMA conference? For those of us going.
That's like the twenty-third, twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one, I have some openings.
Karen, do you think that will give you enough time to ask the department heads and, and for Ann to respond about the committee? I mean, the, uh, company?
You may wanna look into February.
I'm sorry, what, I didn't hear what you said, Cindy.
I said you may wanna look into February if you wanna ask department heads, you know, their.
Yeah, because, I mean, I can bring it up at tomorrow's meeting, but I don't know how quickly people are going to respond to that. And I'm also thinking the week of the thirtieth, and actually, the following week are both town council meeting weeks. So I don't, I don't know if we push it out to like the week of the tenth, if that's too far out. What do you think? We don't have to, but.
And the following week, seventeen to twenty-one, I believe, is school vacation week.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess if you wanna do it, which week did you say, the week of the twenty-seventh?
Uh, January.
Yeah, I could do that.
Twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one, have openings from Sarah, from, um, from a room with AV, um, support.
What, uh, what, what time would you be thinking say on the twenty-seventh? Do we, do we have a time or just a day?
So far.
I can do Monday, the twenty-seventh. I can do the twenty-ninth as well.
Either one's fine.
Not that it's all about me, but just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the twenty-seventh, and this four o'clock time, I think, works well for me.
Counselor Burdick, you're, you're the fellow who has a, um, family and a job.
Uh, yeah, I mean, my schedule is so variable that, though, I could say, that sounds great today, I have no way of knowing whether it will be or not. So as I always say, with any of these, make a meeting time, and if I'm there, I'm there, and if not, my regrets.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so, uh, Monday, you have the twenty-seventh?
Are we gonna go by Zoom again?
Well, maybe we, given the, um, suggestion by Mr. Morin, maybe we should consider meeting in person, especially if the first crack at, um, at the code, cracking the code.
Karen, are you in the office on that Monday or no?
I am not, I'm, I'm usually in on Wednesdays.
So we could all meet in person and you could come in by Zoom?
If that's okay with you, sure, um, that's up to you.
Well, it's just that you, we have town council that week as well, so I'm just trying to be considerate of your time and commuting and long, long, longer days, because of.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, if that, if that's okay with Chris, then.
Yep.
I would love that.
Sounds fine. We, we can get the job done.
And I'm assuming the same for Alison as well?
Yeah, sure.
She can speak for herself.
I was gonna say, I, I don't, I don't have quite the commute that Karen has, so I'm happy to be in person, if it's helpful for one of us to be there and one of us to be on Zoom.
So we'll target January twenty-seventh at four PM?
Sounds good.
Any, do I have that correct? So there's agreement, thank you very much. All right, um, good, I think we're moving along, we'll have, have something to pass along to the, our colleagues. And, uh, I guess the next is to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Come on, somebody.
Thank you. I said.
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Turkleson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
You are adjourned at five twenty-three PM.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for your hard work.
See you all later.
Thanks, bye.